...solar, that's why it is the incentive for twenty five hundred bucks. And all you have to do is say, here, this is our permit, you just have to use this. But it would be something that Gary we had to deal with, so I didn't wanna wait for you to leave the room and then say, ha ha, now you have to deal with your permit.
We do make people get building permits for solar because it's electrical.
Absolutely.
And it's a safety issue.
Yep.
And weight on roofs is another issue. Uh, we, uh, whenever anybody files for a solar, for solar panels on a roof, we ask for an architect's plan to see if the roof is gonna support. Because they're having these problems.
Yeah. Yeah. If you're willing to, all of those things are in this current one, though, if we're to discuss form or modification. If we're willing to adopt the unified one, so it looks the same for developers throughout the state, that's how we get the money. And so I don't know if you, I can give you this copy, and I'll have to find another one, but my family have it colored if you want to see it. And you can give a recommendation to, or if you think there's going to be any problem with it at some point in the future.
See if it's close to what you, what you've got now.
And if it's close enough, I'll look into legalities for what we have to change on our side from municipal law order to adopt that. And then maybe go get some money. And I'll make sure that paperwork is necessary and figure out if we get money to stay in parallel, we sent a few emails out for that, but.
Twenty-five hundred dollars, it sounds like a heck of a.
Yeah, maybe it worked.
I'm glad you watched.
It made it work though.
The flags, that would go for the moment for the last two bridges.
You just sent a lot of donations.
Then I would donate for flags.
Wonderful.
Alright, that's gone on hand.
Alright, thank you. Sir.
Like I said, I'm on the phone Holloway, so don't get freaked out.
Alright. Appreciate it.
Goodnight everybody.
Night, guys.
Starting point out. Alright.
Gary, I'll give you a call about your new hire paperwork.
Okay.
Hey.
Alright, so you wanted to discuss which part for BPW?
I think the most important before we could talk about filling the business, we were talking about the absence in position, correct?
No, I didn't.
What part of that?
It wasn't even that part, um, because we, what we added, um, right added, who's gonna add hiring policy? Um, we got down to policies under new business. And then go over Corey's resignation and correspondence, and then.
Alright, I just don't know how those committees play as well.
Well, I mean, we're all part of it, so we can discuss it at any point.
Yeah, well.
Um, so let's get through the committees, uh, for village properties. Uh, I don't believe there's anything to update there. And Memorial Day Parade, uh, where I know that you've gotten contact with some people from when we last spoke, if you could let the board know everything that, uh, what you made out of that.
Yeah, um, reached out to BPW and the, uh, the Legion. It's gonna be Ken Farner, I believe is the name speaking. Uh, in addition to, I can't remember his name, I didn't write it down, but there's gonna be two speakers, I believe. Of all of them, I'm pretty sure coming from both the Legion and BPW. Uh, Ken said he's gonna, wait, how do you phrase it, he's gonna shake things up? I mean, I don't know, a firecracker or what, you know, scare people, but I mean, I imagine he's gonna give a pretty good speech, I mean, it's. Cause I totally hope we're geared at.
Okay.
As far as, you know, we want to get the knowledge out there, you know, it's not all about flags and. You know, that, that, that's not, Memorial Day's not about flags and all that, I mean, it's about what these guys live through, you know, and. Different stages of veterans, you know, and that's a big thing after these. Uh, you said that you were gonna give a quick speech?
I will give a very brief speech, and then, uh, we discussed that you as well being a veteran.
Yeah.
Um, representing the board as well, um.
Yeah. Reason being, because when I spoke to these fellows, they said they had a hard time getting people in the past to speak, uh, you know, Mary Pritchard spoke, I guess a couple thousand, a lot back, whatever, right? Just the, basically over the years, he said that there'd been a decline in it, and the word he used was, he challenged somebody in the Gator August speech.
How many minutes are we looking at for speeches?
I don't know minute wide, but he did tell me that, you know, these fellows have been standing up there a while, and we're not the only ceremony in the building. I would suggest that anyway, I mean, these guys travel around.
You know, they want low values, so.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to stand up there listening to that guy draw off ten minutes.
That's why we shake things up like one back, you know? No, I mean, it's, you, you gotta keep it within reason and, uh.
Her speeches are gonna be very long, really?
No.
No.
You go with that.
There also will be the dedication of the signs?
Uh, yep, we also have the dedication of the signs, um, I need to get in contact with Diane, we should've done that today, but not, but, uh, I'll get in contact with her. Um, so that we can add that as well to, kind of, the thing will work as far as the, what do you call it, perception? I guess, whenever the, everybody's all down there, call it perception?
Service?
Service, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're down on service and how that'll work. Um, is there anything else to add for the Memorial Day Parade moving on?
Not for me anymore, but as far as the bench coats in the same category. Did we ever, did you ever double check whether for the community day, that the Fireman's Club is in fact getting a dump tank?
That the Fireman's Club is what?
Is, isn't that getting a dump tank? I have kind of no information, I did say I've been looking back on it.
Um, I, the past week, I, everybody's been trying to reach me, but.
Yeah, I.
Um, I can find out no, no one actually.
Yeah, and they actually did say at the Fireman's meeting that I went to, um, they're hoping that for the next meeting, which is the first Monday of the month. I'm not sure what the date on that would be, but if a couple people from the board could be down there to get involved in what the, uh, plan for the festivities, you know? At least we're working together to figure something out, and, uh.
Absolutely.
Maybe a couple of guys, and me being on the fire, in the fire department now, I mean, it's just, I don't know.
Certainly keep in contact, I'd be willing.
Yeah, and a couple of guys will come down and just make a plan and.
Absolutely.
Figure out where we're going, we work together, you know, uh, doing the same thing.
Yep, I agree. Alright, um, anybody else have anything to add for the Memorial Day Parade or for events? Yeah, okay. Um, insurance, oh, Rose? I don't have that.
Let me make it quick together. Thank you, Jay.
Absolutely.
Alright, so today, um, while I was in the office, Hannah, or excuse me, Hannah from Gray Insurance, uh, came by, um, in regards to our renewal premium. And actually went down eight hundred dollars. Um, so saying every, all the great covers that we have, I did, uh, I mean, what was it, was it EMB or Evan, which one is it called now?
Uh, it's, I think it's, oh, shoot, I'm not sure.
By the way, that, that company reached out and wanted to, you know, see what they could do or whatever, said sure, let us know. And with us not having another board meeting and our insurance policy needs to be renewed by, starts on June first. Um, Gray is the only one that has responded back, never heard anything back from.
Haven't heard anything since I submitted the last run request.
And that was last month?
Mm-hmm.
So.
End of last month, I believe.
Uh, as far as I know, Gray provides great service, they've done really good for this village, and is, now we're able to save eight hundred dollars. Uh, we think the premiums are always going up, I think that's a huge benefit. Um, also, what else did Hannah say in regards to our coverages, do you know?
Um, what was the term she used? We didn't, umbrella, we have an umbrella with them that we didn't have before, we had Gray Insurance. Um, is my understanding from what she said this morning?
With a million dollar liability. Am I being correct? Is that what it is, a million dollars? I believe, yeah, that's what it shows. Um, so essentially what this all pertains to, and also they got the equipment as well, um, that the village has, which. And this is anticipating with the new backhoe as well of seventy-five thousand, that we're insuring two hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars for, for the equipment that BPW has. And is that also?
Equipment and property schedules were both checked and?
Yes. Um, so there's one part here where it shows for, to decline purchase of terrorism coverage for certified acts of terrorism. Which if we were to accept it, would be four hundred and twenty dollars, most small municipalities, uh, decline that. Um, also, she has, at least the sign is our liabilities, which is, um, for uninsured motorists is twenty-five thousand. And, uh, some, of coverage for single claim is one million dollars for our policy. And also there's a disclosure stating that they do make a commission off of our policy, which is required by the state. Um, does anybody have any issues with renewing our policy with Gray Insurance?
That's what we had before.
That's what we had for a couple of years now.
Three to four years, maybe?
Where did the EMB or other agencies come up with that?
They didn't, they haven't, they haven't gotten back to us since.
Oh, you asked them for a, uh?
No, he contacted me when, when he'd be newly elected.
Oh, I got some.
So, and I told him, and also I spoke with Hannah as well, that she's gonna get back to me, and which she will, in regards to, um. Seeing about bringing an insurance broker agency out here as well. I told the EMB that, look, this is something we wanna revitalize our community and have some services, one being an insurance agency. And the guy has yet to email me back, or even respond back to the actual quote. And Hannah said she will get in contact with the owner, that they just put one in Randolph, and that they were looking to continue to expand. So we could possibly once again have an insurance broker here, and they're a great company, I'm a type of. Anytime I've spoken with them, they've been very pleasant, I'm sure you can say the same, Rose. So, um, what, so this would be paid, uh, what'd she say, in June?
Yes, we pay it at the June eighth meeting.
The June eighth meeting would be our insurance, which is going to be twenty thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars and seventeen cents. Um, we make, will somebody make a motion regards to accept the, uh, what is it, what do you call it? The insurance premium from Gray Insurance?
I'll make a motion to accept the, the premium, the current premium.
Second? Jason second it?
I don't wanna jump right in that too fast.
All, I know, that was, that was a hard one.
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, unanimous, or did say aye, I did look at him.
I just said that.
I know, I, Karen for.
In the future, if you want me to look at exclusions from the policy and let you know very clearly what those mean and what sorts of liabilities the village is bearing on its own for exclusions. Get in touch with me, I can spend some time looking over the contracts that they propose.
If anybody wants to look at this as well, the premiums up, you know?
You're good. You, hmm, probably should have, I'm just thinking, we should have, um, included in that motion the authorization for the mayor to sign the renewal.
Okay, can I have somebody make a motion to?
Make the motion?
No, you're not, I mean, to, uh, authorize myself to go ahead and sign the renewal policy with Gray Insurance.
I'll make that one.
I'll second it.
So Tom made the motion, Work second it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To unanimous, approve and carry.
Okay.
Alright, uh, civil defense, is there anything to, to add for civil defense, does anybody know? I don't.
But you'll need to sign it and give it back?
What, right now?
No, not right now, but, don't.
Here, we can just surround.
Don't disappear. Thank you, Jay.
Um, senior citizens, is there anything to add to that?
No, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to reach out to them quite yet. I think, uh, this weekend, I have a lot of free time, so I'll be able to, I'll roll there.
Well, a little skip.
Maybe not.
Um, youth council, we already discussed everything with Stansky and Work and Bo, you both are gonna go meet with her, start a time report back on. Uh, eight, Parks and Trees, uh, Big John, has he talked about it with us? That'll be fun, uh.
Ambulance, too?
He did talk about ambulance.
Talked about ambulance, and what about the, uh?
The sidewalk with the.
The sidewalk issue that, you know?
With the sidewalk issue with ambulance, which we corresponded regards to, um. Right, again, we have to stick with what we've done in the past, and what we've held with. Others, the only difference I think that we can do for the ambulance is that we can include them in the bid for sidewalks, because they are non-for-profit, whether with a business or a resident, you can't do such. But I don't know, and this is a question for you, Jay, is, so if.
Uh, the email that I sent out, did I include all of you in the email or?
Yes, no, it was everybody.
I just wanted to make sure I had replied all.
So, like, if, A, are we, this was me thinking, and I didn't know if we were able to, are we able to include them in the bid, but the s-?
And have them pay for their part of the?
And have them pay for their part.
I understand that you are allowed to do that, yes.
Okay. So they could say, by getting at our price, just for us to say, if things, contract if we take, uh, stake is ten dollars, but for the municipality, they're gonna give us five bucks.
But you'll have to make sure that the bid that you put out, you'll have to have them separate out, in the bid, the cost for that portion. Or say, here's the cost per how many feet of sidewalk we're doing, and then do your that portion.
Yeah, it's how usually.
Yeah, so.
Is that how usually it's?
Well, here's, here's my only question about this whole thing. With them raising the, the ground up to make everything drain to the road, to get into the DIs. That left that sidewalk low, if they just leave it at that level, that the sidewalk is, and that sidewalk floods, whose responsibility is that?
Okay, you're saying if it floods, okay.
The sidewalk is holding water.
Responsibility for somebody being a worker.
Slip and fall, whatever.
Alright, uh, it depends, I know that's a great way to answer, everybody likes to hear. It depends on whether or not there is a local law that Gator August has that says, who's responsible for upkeep and maintenance of sidewalks, you may or may not have one. Some municipalities do, uh, going all the way back to the eighties, New York City had a Big Apple Pop Hall and Sidewalk map. And then eventually New York City said, uh, okay, screw this, local landlords are responsible for upkeep of their sidewalk. And most municipalities followed suit after that, I don't know if Gator August did or not. That being said, I can look up a standard sidewalk law and give you the pros and cons of that. That covers multiple things, slips and falls because of repair to sidewalk, until the village is informed in writing that there's some defect in the sidewalk, in which case it becomes the village's responsibility. That's standard, though you can choose to modify that however you want, one way or the other. Snow removal, right now village is undertaking to remove the snow, and as long as you don't create a more hazardous condition, you can still make an incumbent on the individual landlord to remove the snow. You're saying, look, we'll try and do it, but if we don't get to it, responsibility for the snow is on you, because you maintain and keep up the sidewalk. Those two typically get wrapped into the same issue. And if there's flooding, if there's some significant catastrophic damage to the sidewalk, although the village makes the effort to go and put in all the sidewalks in a public right way. Everybody's responsible for their own sidewalk, and will try to fix it if we can get FEMA money for it, something like that, typically those all get wrapped into the same law. And if there's a nice law already written and in place, covers that, if not, as I said, uh, I got a response from Dan saying, you know, yeah, go look into that, let us know whether or not we're gonna have one. If a majority of you want me to look into that, I'll, uh, add it to this long list that I'm working on over here.
Do, do we have one in place already, or, or not, Rose?
I'm not sure, I, I'd have to check out the village law book.
Would it be in Zomi, your law?
Uh, it depends on how your laws are sorted, and some of them are a little pretty unsorted right now.
Now, what if they didn't, I would concern, you know, I want, I would like to help, help them out, because they're everybody's ambulance service. But my next problem is, if they bring that sidewalk up on that dirt section they got, is the sidewalk before that section gonna have to come up to meet it?
You can't have more than, I wrote some weird case on this, it is below a one inch gap, it doesn't create, it becomes tribal issue, fact. If it's bigger than a one inch gap, and somebody created that one inch gap, it's tripping hazard, whoever created that one inch gap will be responsible for trips and falls in the gap.
So that would be the end of it.
As if I had a trip and walk, a trip and fall, I did a lot of research, it was good.
Well, however, the village already has that, so coming from what, is it the Brown's house and the, so they meet there, if they're, whether it be lower or higher, they have to match whatever degree it is that the village has already had before. So, I mean, that's just, I know we wanna help them, but we can't, uh, there's only so much.
By dealing in that bid and getting them a lower rate on that job, it is helping, I don't know if we can offer them much more. And, and stay within our bounds and set good precedent and all that.
Because then you know darn well, we do this for someone, and they're gonna say, well, you did this for them, now you do this for me. And you know we have people that will do that and pull us to the club, so, and we wanna hold thinking that and higher bar.
I'd, I'd love to live in a world where if you just say, oh, sure, we'll put the sidewalk back in, don't worry about it, sorry, you know, but we, it, that wouldn't be.
So you're meeting with them what, on, on Thursday?
Thursday, I don't check, yeah, I'm pretty sure it's Thursday.
Are you the only one on the ambulance committee?
Yeah.
Would you like me to attend that with you?
Sure, yeah.
See how much I can.
This Thursday is CCMOA?
Oh!
I guess we ain't going.
The Thursday thing is.
Well, are you going to?
Yeah, exactly.
No, that was, uh, wasn't.
Oh, you didn't? Who's all going to CCMOA?
The, the playing mission?
Yes.
Yes. Were you?
No, I weren't.
Oh.
Wait, do you, you, you mean us?
Uh, no, Work, you, myself, and Rose.
Yeah, that would be for us.
Eighteen hundred.
Uh, what is that for?
Gator August County Municipal Officials Association meeting.
Do you know if they have rights to that one?
No.
Do they?
Uh, that one I don't believe, no, there isn't, uh, it's, cause what they allow, today?
Is there a tree that shows up there?
I don't believe, I think it's just what clerks, I mean, of course the board, and the clerk, and the treasurer, I believe are invited. I don't know if CEOs and attorneys or any PPW are, are there, are they?
Uh, I'm not sure, because they did have Cat County Highway there, I mean, it would certainly apply to.
Well, could you find out?
I can.
If, would you be able to, what, would it be Paula or Carrie?
Carrie.
Carrie, and then if you could let J. mail tomorrow?
I can do that.
Thank you. Um.
And I'll look at whether or not it's worthy of public funds for me to, though, I had to stuff it, I already know, or worked on one of the conferences tonight, oh boy, maybe.
Well, tomorrow night is something about airport, oh, I've got the thing here.
Tomorrow night?
No, not tomorrow night. I, I'm randomly changing the date for meetings.
She's just trying to mess with me, and that's fine.
It's fun.
Is that the airport, Rick?
Uh, only in airport support group, history of airport, short walking tours.
Yeah.
That, that's what it is this month, um, so.
City Mayor and Mayor is pretty much gonna be posting us in. Over there. Yeah.
Okay, probably doesn't make sense if there's any cost for paying for you to go, but it's careful.
And is there anything else for the ambulance that needs to be brought out?
Oh, yes, there is, they are, I don't know my mustache here. So I don't, I don't know, uh, anyway, they are selling these, uh, memorial bricks. Um, I think they're fifty dollars a piece.
Okay.
Um, when you purchase one of these bricks, they actually put your name or whoever you want's name, you know, dedication on there. And that is what's gonna be going around their, their flag pole, um, so. They, uh, they've done a wonderful job on that ambulance building.
Yes, they have.
They've got a lot of money for that ambulance building, but, um.
Very nice.
I don't see them putting theirs, so I don't know.
But, uh, you know, so, pass the word, you know, maybe.
I think Sandy's in charge of that.
Yeah, pass the word, and then we'll get some bricks sold.
Sandy Charles?
Yes, yeah. I'm gonna stand in front of the camera and talk to people.
Um, treasurer report, Jean's not here, uh, did, did Jean give you anything to report by chance?
No, there are no transfers this month.
Okay, um, and what do you have to report?
What do I have? Alright, we talked about CCMOA, I copied the register report to you to show you what deposits have been, uh, deposited into general water and sewer this month by the clerk's office. Um, and, okay. Uh, we've been prepping, getting ready for the June first water bills, the annual water quality report is done and copied. Um, I've got the sewer electric credits, uh, John read those today, I'm still waiting on the regular meter reads. I am getting, uh, they, they've been started, and I am getting some calls from people who have gotten meter cards, so the reads are coming in very slowly. Um, I'm still waiting for tax bills for June first, those are the other things that I have to have done by the end of the month. Um, we've started the sewer benefit billing, the sewer benefit list is done, um, with current owners, addresses, property numbers. Those get mailed out for July first, tomorrow I'll be requesting address labels from the town assessor to assist with those bills. I have the tax warrant, and for some reason I only made three copies, um, but I have the tax warrant, I did send it to Jean, but didn't hear back from him. Um, for the general fund, four hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and three dollars, that would be, um, the tax levy.
Yep.
For the unpaid water, seventeen thousand seven ten ninety-eight, for unpaid sewer, seven thousand two eighty-eight oh two, and for unpaid benefit charge, seventy-eight fifty-four. Uh, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-four, for a total of four hundred fifty-three dollars and, four hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, I start collecting June first. Uh, no penalty until July first, then five percent is added, and an additional one percent for each month after July. Um, October thirty-first, the taxes are sent back to the county treasurer at Little Valley, additional penalties are applied, and people pay directly to the county then. Um, so I have the tax warrant here, and, um, you would be making a motion, um, authorizing the mayor to sign the tax warrant. And that's what authorizes me to collect taxes June first, to pay for your proposed budget.
You're willing to make that motion?
I guess I'll make that one.
Second?
I'll second it.
Oh?
I, no, that's fine.
No, wait, who said second?
Bo did.
Oh, Bo said, okay.
You don't want me.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, approved and carried. And that's another, I just wanna reiterate on that, that that's another reason why we need to get this water law passed, is because there was thirty-three thousand dollars re-leveeed just from water sewer bond. That, and you can tell it's a huge part, you know, we hammered that before, just wanna remember people that we do need to get that water committee together, and we need to get that law updated so that.
We tried to put the CCMOA, we tried to put the CCMO.
Anything else, Rose?
Um, I talked to Southern Tier West, they have waived the fee for you.
Okay.
For Houghton, um, I know you talked to Nikon and/or the hotel.
Both, and they both agreed to waive completely, so if you have a check written up, don't send it out.
Okay, I've got the check back for the hotel.
Conference attendance, that's taken care of, the, their number bill is on it, if they do.
That was already paid in April.
Okay, then we will have to get that in paperwork to get them to send it back, but they did agree to give that back to us in full, for Mr. Moser's attendance. And the manager at the hotel for the Gideon Putnam said, well, we, we're waiting for you to send a check in.
Right.
They said one hadn't been sent, so they sent the check.
He was, he was gonna bring it with him?
There you go, so, and I talked to the manager, I didn't get anything writing, but she said, don't send the check in, we're not gonna bill you on it, and I turned the check back in.
Right, you gave me the check, we're voiding that, um, what about, and you said the first night?
The first night, I put out my credit card, and I haven't checked it, I need to see that it's been returned, but I can go ahead and, uh, write a check to the lodge for it, for that.
Yeah, if you've already cashed the other one, then.
Just went there, yep.
Yep. Okay, um.
And might remember by other conversation you've heard, but if there's some big problem you have, you know, give me her number, and I'll call her.
Are you turning it on? Are we on call?
Trusty wolf has told.
Are you kidding me? I have olive oil coming from my pores right now, jeez.
How about we move it over there?
There's nowhere to plug it in over there.
The floor.
We have to do seating warm to cool.
So you'll hold that one there.
I'm wearing a woolly shirt, it doesn't get as much, like, bare skin.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Um, and the other thing was, um, when I was reviewing the organizational meeting, I noticed that you didn't set Mike's pay rate, you set the other officer's pay rate.
Yes, so we need to add the, what, three percent?
Yes, I wanna say fifteen ninety would be the new proposed rate, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the three percent.
And that starts when, the first?
June first.
Do you know if that was already taken into account in the budget?
Yes.
Oh.
So, then we just, what, we need to make a motion for that, or make a resolution for that, excuse me?
Yes.
Alright, so can, uh, somebody make a motion that we approve, um, a three percent raise for the officer in charge of Ray? Alright, so can, uh, somebody make a motion that we approve, um, a three percent raise for the officer in charge, which raises the, um, pay to, what is it, fifteen ninety?
I believe it's fifteen ninety, but I'll double check that.
Whatever the previous rate was, add three percent, which is a continuous increase, um, anybody make that motion? Jason made the motion?
I can't ever tell who's saying, okay.
I will second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 It's like y'all practiced.
Yes, I did.
I did hear you.
I hear her.
Aye.
Alright, unanimous, approve and carry.
We're getting a little punchy. Okay.
Is that everything for the clerk?
I hope that's it.
Okay, uh, Louis France, do you have anything to report?
Unfortunately, I don't. And this will bore you all and I want to apologize in advance, but, um, we randomly upped the speed with what happened before three of you were gonna onboard. And if you saw the meetings, you're familiar with what happened, but behind the scenes, I did a significant amount of research to make sure I'm doing everything appropriately. I've got one copy, so we don't have to kill any trees, just let them be, put the official record after board.
Is this one copy?
Yeah, it's one copy and then it'll go in the official report as well, we can look at it, research it, and then have you.
You, uh, need to take a break here.
Oh, it's a break before I give this info?
Well, I don't know, it's just.
I just need to take, I gotta go to the bathroom quick.
Yeah, let's.
Are we able to take a recess?
Yes.
A five-minute recess?
So I'm gonna stretch, they have to make a motion, second, go for a five-minute recess, come back, restart the meeting.
Alright, so can I get a motion for someone to?
Then I will second that.
We are making a motion to take a five-minute recess, we will return Act ten thirty-seven, it is ten thirty-two. Oh, all group, alright, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approve and carry.
I'm also gonna make a motion to move these tables up.
So.